And white glasses running down the Wisconsin River. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Behrens.
Here.
Mr. Behrens is absent prior notice. Mr. Christensen?
Present.
Mr. Ferrick?
Here.
Mr. Gopow?
Present.
Ms. Lautner?
Present.
Noonan is absent prior notice. Popa, Mr. Popa.
Here.
And Ms. Ross is absent prior notice. Mr. Walter.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Public comment. Seeing none, hearing none. We'll move on to the agenda. Agenda additions and deletions.
Under Old Settlers 5B, please add Parking Improvements Proposal Approval. And second item, gazebo refurbishment scope of service notification.
So those will be two sub items under Old Settlers. Anything else? Hearing none, seeing none, I would accept a motion.
I'll move approval of the agenda as been revised.
Seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? We have an agenda. Proof of minutes, October 4, 2023, regular session.
I read them thoroughly and I thought they were perfect.
I as well.
You watched dinner tonight. Kudos to the secretary.
Are you doing a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Support.
There's a motion to approve the minutes as presented and there is support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have minutes. Approval of financials.
Our financials were at 52%.
I assume not much left for the rest of the year.
No. Contractual stock, a little bit of tractor bait and lighted, I don't know when they get it coming out. And two projects, potentially one, one for sure, maybe $5,000, $10,000 or so.
They would come out of capital outlay, yes?
I'm not sure where they would come on in actual outlook.
Definitely legal, the parking improvements at Old Settler will be capital.
Um.
Good point.
Okay. On your, what is, what is memberships dues and fees? Did we do something more than what we expected to do there to be?
No, that was state fees for the water permits.
Okay.
Really couldn't come up with a great answer.
Okay, so do we want to, for another year, make sure our membership dues and fees is, is higher? Or would we pull it out of contractual? You think she'll move it up out of contractual or something like that? Okay, all right.
Those are miscalculated, miscon-
Miscategorized.
Miscategorized.
Okay, okay, so I'm just concerned now because now is the time to make any amendments to our budget for 2024 and if we're finding, like I see travel is, is out also, not by much, but we've got a little bit more to do. So that's gotta be, it, no, you have a separate gas and line item, right? Is this mileage then? Don't you have a sep-, you have a separate gas and oil, you're okay there. So is travel mileage or?
Travel's a mileage.
Yeah.
Our mileage.
When we put our mileage on our expense sheets, that's what that is.
This is ours, I knew that. Okay, so that might be something for us to, because that's up and is not likely to come down either by IRS. It's not going to come down any too soon until, so that may be a line item we have to change. Okay. But taxable travel is, that's not us? Taxable travel?
Actually taxable travel is the travel that we're normally putting in for. The other travel would be non-taxable.
And who is, because we would all be taxed, right?
I'd have to go back and look at my IRS code to tell you the difference.
All right, well, we'll just check on that. It looks like together they're not too bad, but, you know. Okay.
I would accept a motion with the October Parks financials.
Okay, I'll move it.
Is there a support?
One question.
Let's do support then.
Support first, um, support.
Okay, discussion.
Uh, just to Melinda, we talked about the capital that we haven't spent.
Yes.
Being approved on the board to roll over, any update on that?
Um, I, I did bring it up and I did respectfully request that they, they do that and I heard no, no dissension at all. So right now I'm expecting that that will happen. We will be able to roll that. So I, what I have not been successful in is, is getting them to throw in an additional $100,000 for Miles Kimberly walking trail, but I keep trying.
We'll go for 50.
I'll take whatever they'll give us. Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Okay, we have the October Parks financials. Item B, administrative assistant. Aye, approval of stipend for fiscal year 2023 work.
Page 11 details the motion from June 3, October 23.
Okay, I gotta find that. Whoops, I went wrong, jada, hold on, that should mean. Oh.
Do we know who this Laurel S. Evans is?
Who could that be? Who could that be?
So there's the motion there on page 11 by Lautner, seconded by me, that Parks and Rec Commission recommended the county board of commissioners to reaffirm the appointment of a Parks Commission Administrative Assistant to assist and guide the Parks and Recreation Commission. And then the proposed recommendation beyond that, I move that the Parks and Recreation Commission recommend to the county board of commissioners approval of the budgeted stipend for executive assistant Laurel Evans in the amount of $3,600 for work performed as the Parks Administrative Assistant for fiscal year 2023. And I guess what we're looking for is that motion at this point in time.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. As stated.
Mm-hmm.
As stated. Discussion?
Okay, I've gotten confused. We're talking 2023, which we're coming to the end of.
You can't, you can't give funding from a scheduling perspective, at least we actually have found the work.
Oh, okay, so this is for the approval of the stipend to pay you for this year?
Yes.
Okay, now I understand.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a motion. Now there's an item there, new administrative assistant search.
If there are those that aren't aware, I announced my retirement this week. I will be physically in the building through December 8 and then I will still be on the books through March due to the accumulated vacation time that I just had some to do. So you are giving lots of notice that you probably have to get someone other than whoever replaces me because there is a lot of things to grant that person up to that position. So if you wanted to work with our HR director, you can try to search for a suitable candidate where you have ideas, anything you think might work. I'm just letting you know that I can't be here till this morning.
When will you not be here, Laurel?
I'll be here through the December meeting. So my last visit today is December 8.
Okay. Whoa. So, I mean, currently we share you with the stipend and we've been talking about it rather, if there's not the available hours of your replacement person, therefore we're looking at a new hire?
You're going to have to have a discussion on which route you want to go.
Okay, and that was the HR person?
Right. Now, there had been discussion of potentially shifting oversight to planning, but because our planning and community development director, Trudy Gala, has also announced her retirement, that would be a unusual burden for that office as a temporary position because they have moved the staffs.
So for our minutes, do we need to have essentially a recommendation that Casey contact the HR chairperson of this committee, contact the HR person about this position and fulfilling the position? Sounds appropriate. Okay. Motion? Huh?
Did you say you need a motion?
I don't know that I need a motion, I think it's just a recommendation if that occurred.
But Laurel's money's come from where?
She is a temporary office assistant tasked to Parks, so she gets paid out of the meeting.
No, I just looked at it, I think, just.
Is it, is it that I covered?
Oh, it's a separate line item.
Is it on the Parks budget though?
Yes. Yep.
So it's a temporary assistant and it's paid through our budget? Okay. So that's the minutes. I'm sorry, that, those are the minutes.
What is that? How many months right now?
It's a temporary, Laurel, I assume.
It's like five.
We hung on to and will have the minutes. We won't have all of the-
Oh, here is it. Oh, here.
Direction.
Yeah, okay.
And all of the above.
Which we need to backfill.
Affirmative. Very much so. You will be missed.
Losing my jada.
So I think what we need to do is task the chair to-
Maybe consensus to have-
Casey, yeah, Casey appoint a very limited committee, non-quorum committee, to move forward with figuring out where we go from here.
Laurel, you're in, you're in so many places here, I get confused on if you have a job description that's specific for the Park and Rec? And then you have one that you don't. You have a general job description for all you do. Do you have a job description?
She's a drain commissioner's secretary and then I loan her out to the building.
It would be nice for the, for this committee to review your job description, to see it just so when we're going to hire somebody else, we kind of get a feel for it. If your job description doesn't categorize what you do here and what you do for us and what you do for over there, then it becomes harder. And there's always the last item, other items, other duties as a sign.
Do you have any sense, out of curiosity, how many hours a month may be dedicated to this?
I can't hear you.
Do you have any sense as to how many hours each month you may be dedicating to the Parks Commission currently, just roughly?
I really don't know if I could. I'd have to think about it. Just off the top of my head, I don't think I could give you the accurate because I have so many little things going around right now. I'm trying to get my annual reports and commissions packets ready, which there's a new packet here, you know, for your membership. Yeah, I have to think about it because one of the things that I have to do right now is that my boss understands everything that I do there because I know it'll bother me a lot.
I'm sure that's true. I was just curious, you know, looking for someone.
If I could be, if I could ask me that, I wouldn't help, be helpful because for every hire, they will definitely be putting in a lot of their time because there is a huge curve, you know, the nervous systems.
Well, just thinking this through in my own mind, if we're trying to chat with people about this opening, then one of the questions though, they will very likely have is how much time is involved in this. That's probably one of the first questions that gets asked.
And I think where Laurel was going with that is that-
We can't know.
The person that we would be curious about would fulfill this duty, but probably multiple other small duties that Laurel lists out. So it won't be just us.
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
And so.
You know, we're the small player in your job though, I mean, we're, we're not going to have, we're not the big influence around who gets hired. Some other department in this building is going to be that person, right? We're just tagging along, it seems like.
Well, we'll need somebody different because the person that replaces her won't be able to do all the other stuff she does.
So I think it'll be-
Physically, that person.
So we'll get a designated person because you're-
Well, that's the thing, you know, how, who and how.
Well, just to kind of give you an example, I spent a good portion of the minority trying to track down potential quotes for what I thought would be a removal of septic system and then I contacted John Casbin directly and said, well, no, it's a smaller, I don't want to say sister, but it's obviously not an entire septic tank. So at that point, I called people back, I said, a whole lot of time given the report, we're going to discuss it at Park 5. So that should be a good portion of the minority. Contacted Kerry, Scott, some other people. So that's just an example of the things that I do on the fly. I try to fit in. Now, the clerk's office that had a discuss in the past, or perhaps asking them to be tasked with this, and I don't know, Michelle's ever been able to that, even if she certainly has the strength to do that, but it's certainly something that a group can discuss as one of the options. Because there probably isn't another office in this building that would understand Robert's rules as well as that office. So are you thinking a consensus to-
Task Casey with coming up with a committee to move forward, probably chat with Darcy, maybe chat with Michelle, obviously chat with you and try to get some direction. Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman?
John?
This brings up some memories from about three years ago, and Melinda can probably speak to that and you can, but I brought this up to the commissioners that-
Might not happen this year, but-
No, it doesn't matter when it happens, but that, we need, we need a part-time person and they could use that part-time person, I think, on a couple other things. Now, this person does, is just, wouldn't have to be limited to clerical duties. And I was asking at that time for boots on the ground too. Can you follow this or if there's someone on one of these other parks and say, hey, we need a person to run out and get a letter from John Casbin or something, or we need someone to meet this, or go get a contract for that. And then also do, matter of fact, when I, when I had a job with consumers, I had a man do all my clerical work and the guy was good. Doesn't have to be male or female, but I was looking at that time, three years ago, with more boots on the ground. And I think at that time they were also then looking at a facilities manager and I don't know where all that went, but I know after that, they got Laurel to do more of this stuff. Grant writing is one thing. Laurel could spend days just doing grant writing. She sees the stuff come through and she passes it on to us and it goes in a black hole or down a well and there's no one doing it. Anyway, rest my case, I think, I think we do need a part-time person, whether it's contract or reports to the, reports to the little county.
Just to the park rec.
Well, at that time, it was a long speech and this is, Melinda can probably remember, there was, there was a bunch of stuff on that wish list and I said, we need a part-time person here. These committees and all these park subcommittees, we go away and nothing gets done. Some of this stuff's been on the books for a long, long time and we just need to look at that again. No, we can still have this committee or this little subcommittee to see if you wanted to hire a temporary clerk, but I think there's a lot more to do on that if we had, if we just had another person. Now, the county has a whole bunch of other stuff that needs to get done too with part-time help, but they're into their eyeballs, all kinds of things.
You can speak to the HR director and the laundry list of qualities you're looking for.
I'd like to know where that laundry list was that I drafted up here. I said it was about three years ago, wasn't it?
Look at your minutes. That's where you'll find it.
It's probably in my computer someplace, but I'll rest my case.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, I, there's nothing that I would, would change about what John said. We def, we definitely had a problem for a lot of years getting, getting organized because you're absolutely right. We would say we're going to do something, but there was nobody to follow up because we're all just volunteer here, so that was a difficult thing. So I don't know how the board of commissioners is going to move forward. We've been kicking the idea of a facilities manager around, but haven't actually committed to one yet and I don't know that it's going to be in the 2024 budget. So we're going to have to probably stand alone. If there's one that can be found, a, a part-time, if part-time help within this building could be found for a stipend to help guide us, then that's probably better yet without a stipend. Somebody who's got time on their hands in the building that has time to do something like that, has an interest in parks, that would be the most ideal thing, obviously. So, yep, we have to just search.
All right, Casey's got his work cut out for him.
Sorry he wasn't here, honey.
That's why you guys were not being here.
Yeah. Okeydoke. All right, I'll give Casey a shout. Item number three. MMR, MA, risk assessment. August 4th, report review. 12 to 15. This is something we've seen before. And I guess the reasoning to have it here would be to go through it again and see what we need to do and keep that on the front burner.
Could I suggest something, Steve, that each one of these parks, this is a very thorough report, I really liked it. I spent some time on it and I thank Laurel for passing it out. What, this is just an idea, Steve, what if each one of our park committees were given the order right now to go through each one of those recommendations and then say yea or nay, or we will take care of it, or it's in progress and then keep that as, I don't want to say living document, but keep bringing it up until it's done. Because there's someone here that can be handled real quick, like the fire extinguisher needs to be mounted on a doorway. Is it done or isn't it done? And then report back to Debra or whatever that we've done it. We can go through all these items now and mark yea or nay, but my idea is that we give the assignment to each one of the committees and say, tell us what you're doing here. Now, that's just my thoughts. What do you think?
I like that idea. We just did that with Old Settlers earlier today, so I think that's a real solid recommendation and I would support it.
And then put it in the, in a minute somehow and say, okay, let's, if the settlers did it today at our next Parks and Rec and say, okay, what did you do and what's open? And then have it on our, have it on our, oh, agenda every time. Okay, we're going to go over these insurance things. Some of them are just a suggestion and say, ah, I'm not sure, we need to trim all the weeds back or something, I don't know. Did you look at them all thoroughly?
Didn't we, Raffi Valley, are you with over this as well because you had made the recommendation for the safety route?
Yeah, and that was one of them. We can just say done. And we purchased it because it was on here, but we can say, yeah, that's done, that's done.
And Miles Kimberly did a lot of this when we went over to the master plan.
And that's good. But I think for the record and for reporting back to the board or something, hey, we got this insurance thing, Debra, and we're all going through it and here's where we are on it.
The other thing I noticed, it's been a little while, that the previous report came out in 19, didn't it? Something like that, or seven, or whatever came out. I looked at the things on there and nothing was addressed from that report several years ago.
Yeah, and so it should be, it should be on our agenda every time. Let's go over this insurance report. Okay, where are you here on Old Settlers, you know, and say, oh, that one, that one, that one, paint the gazebo. Well, do we want to do it? Is thing's going to deteriorate? And who's ever on Old Settlers will have to say, yeah, we'll get it done next year and it stays open until it's painted? Is that an insurance problem? I don't know. But who's ever in Old Settlers should report back and that's just my two cents. I'll shut up.
I think that's a great idea. We can keep the insurance issues on the committee agendas, period.
Just remember all these repairs cost money. So you have to put in cheers which ones are the most significant to do.
Well, there is, but you look at what's under that dam authority and that's a hot button on the dam right now. There's a lot of stuff there to do. He brought up some good points and said, yeah, we addressed that with a lawyer's letter and putting signs up and yada, yada.
One thing I'll point out on this report, on page 12, they talk about purchasing a flammable storage cabinet, that's probably not the right word to use.
Just say, no, we're not doing it, we're getting rid of it.
No, no.
A storage floor.
Add an S. We just need an X, flammable.
Take the things out of there, we don't need them.
Right.
Add an S.
But, but anyway.
Okay, I think, and we can do a consensus that the committees will be bringing the insurance issues forward. Any objection to that idea?
Good idea.
Okay, moving right along. Okay, moving right along. Winter activity guidelines.
I have to tell you, it must've just been a little disconnect on their part because somebody had asked me if we ever got it. So I went above the head of Mr. Van Dorn's head to our business manager. It's like, maybe this is kind of just the cracks, but I lost carry a couple of times for this and the next year I had it. So it was really good. So I've only had it a day. This probably is something good for all three committees, but if you're considering seriously putting a link at Miles, um, there's a lot of, it's not the secret assets that you need to.
Well, I looked at that. I was wondering just where can we save this that we'll all remember that it's there? Cause this is a good, this is a good document.
Everything's in the board office is the packet is always uploaded to the meeting page for this meeting. So it is easy to find. And you heard that we got the packet visually, so.
We just got to remember that it's in that file. That's.
Yeah, so there's. Maintenance has it as well because maintenance will try to compare.
When we put the new park plan together, we probably just want to include it as an addendum to the park plan.
That's probably a place for it on a park plan or whatever, that these are good guidelines. They're very good guidelines.
So I think, uh, we add, uh, winter risk management packet to Veronica Valley Committee and Miles Kimberly Committee. Cause both of those areas have winter activities. And it'll be the committee chair's, um, job to make sure that's on the agenda and it's gone over at the committee level to make sure that, um, it's kind of sifted and sorted and seeing what's there that we can pick out and do. And maybe pick Scott's brain while we're doing it to make sure that, uh, we're not missing anything.
It is a pretty down-to-earth report. It was, you know, very practical.
A lot of common sense.
Exactly.
A lot of common sense. Yep, looks good. So by consensus, I think we could, um, push the winter activity guidelines packet onto Veronica Valley and Miles Kimberly. Do we use Old Settlers as an access for ice fishing?
Not that I know of.
No, there's easier access, right?
I think so.
Like road ends and whatnot.
I don't even know, it's not plowed, that's what I was just going to say.
So it's not.
You had enough snow on the road, you weren't getting in there.
It's not handy for ice fishing and they have better access other places. Obviously, they, a lot of ice fishing happens on Glen Lake, but not from our part.
I don't know, with the springs in the hillside, would that be the best place to go out on the ice there? Are the springs out there? Uh-uh. It's so shallow for so long.
It's very shallow and not in the Atlantic anyway.
Yeah, I would think it's not good.
It's to hike two miles to get to deep enough water.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any further comment on the risk management at all?
The coolest was if we could do it again like we did last year on Lake Lelandau when we had the two days where it was just the sheet of glass and everybody could go out and ice skate on the lake. So if we did that again, that'd be great.
Dial, have to dial up some weather for that one.
All right. See what you can do.
Yeah.
That was very popular. Like the ice caves, you know? That would be another great event for Leland County again.
Yeah. Yeah, that made national news.
So Steve, are you putting it on the agenda for our next meeting as an agenda item that these two parks? Keep looking at this and reporting and see if any of this.
Yeah, the committees will have to pick it up.
But it should be on the agenda, so that.
Veronica Valley and Miles.
Okay.
I'll relay it to Dave.
All right.
And Don is here, so. Okay. All right. Item four, Parks Commissioner Recommendation.
I already distributed the packet. By the time I heard Mr. Aaron's response, he is, he is able to serving a full term. We have filled in for Mr. Smith and to retire being leaving out of the area. So I have included all of the potential.
Right.
Applicants in the packet.
Now, Aaron's is highlighted for what reason? You got it highlighted in yellow.
Because needs retired or he, his term ends at the end of this year. I only highlight the ones that are in.
So he can be reappointed?
Yes.
But Trudy was also looking, is that what I gathered? Was Trudy trying to recruit you for a planning commission? Did I read that right?
That, that was occurring too, but I think they filled that, but I haven't heard anything recently.
Did we fill the planning commission?
Right now, there is transportation, Craig Brown wants to, he's comfortable in Hoover because he's kind of broken.
Right.
Amy Trulina is resuming, wasn't she education?
And she was, or was she education or tourism?
I think Mr. Miller has engaged, he wants to.
So for, um, so who else? Do we have other applicants then for the? So what you're saying, if everybody's reappointed, planning commission's full? Is that what you're saying?
Well, there's one hole because.
Is that the tourism? I think there's, um. Oh, planning commission tourism category. Currently, okay, yeah, currently we have an opening for the tourism category for Leland County Planning. So in, and you had applied back in the day for either parks or planning.
Correct.
And you got parks because we didn't have an opening on planning. So Trudy wants to steal you to planning. That's what I'm reading. So.
I personally have not heard that.
Okay, I was just reading, but.
Personally what? I have not heard that.
Okay.
Well, this email that you're.
Is that old?
This is from 2019.
Oh, it is very old. Okay. So why is it in here? Does she have another opening?
That was part of the, uh, yeah.
Oh, it's just part of the application. Okay, so then we're good. We'll just keep continuing to look for a planning commission representative. Okay, very good. I see, I missed the date because I looked at the, okay.
John, you're older now, so they probably watch anyways.
That's true.
So.
Wither and wiser.
Can I recap what I think I understand?
Just disregard that, though.
Okay, so John's term ends at the end of December of 2023?
Yes, he fulfilled the partial term.
So I recommend we reappoint John to Parks and Recreation.
And I would second that motion if that's what it means.
So this is a recommendation to the county board?
Yes.
The draft motion is on page 28.
Okey-dokey. Thank you.
And that's the motion I made.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you, John. All right. Committee reports and recommendation. Miles.
So that first color page that was a separate email, you can insert it at the spot between 44 and 55. 44 was the latest communication with John Casbin. Then Bradley Cass, we knew that there was a little bit here to water in the project. And then I guess Scott to go out and take pictures of the spots that are concerned that we want to do something with. We don't have to worry about the drain field. Advice from environmental health was it's got to dry out the drainage. Others have suggested it's best to leave the drain field where it is and not worry about it, I believe. So the only thing, it's kind of like a, a smaller, you call it a underground chamber. So Scott took some pictures around that double sided insert. And there's one in the top half and one on the.
What's your take on those, Scott?
Um. The, the one on the first end should go slightly.
Let me see if I have it.
Fairly big. Should probably just be crushed.
I know, I saw it, but.
So this is where the effluent would hang out?
Well, he called it a chamber for the, um, valve.
Oh.
Switch the valve switching.
Valve is just a plug that he puts over the pipe that's, you see that black right there? That sewage is just running to the ground and that pipe and then it's not going to lock on the one at the top. The one at the top should come in there and find its way through that hole.
Now, this is, this is abandoned now that they've installed their new field. And the pipe that I see coming in here is capped or cut on the other side of the road where they put in their stuff. Correct? There's nothing flowing through this pipe.
Should it be, right.
So essentially the.
Nothing's been done to this. It was something cut on the other side. This is as it was.
So essentially, to get rid of this issue, we fill the hole.
We'll probably pump out anything, make something.
No, it was just drawing, well, not drawing, but.
So are these, are these just two shut offs? That's all they are?
They're not even shut offs. It's just a plug that he moves from pipe to pipe.
Close the shut off. So we had, he has to go in one to open it and the other one to close it or what? I don't understand.
It doesn't matter.
That's all been abandoned now. Non-functional.
Well, we got to figure out what it is, but.
It sets out of the ground is my point, but if you're going to put a path through there, it's going to be a big hole here. My recommendation is check it out.
It needs to be remediated. I agree 100%. At the very least, it needs to be filled and leveled, you know, top part leveled off. But what, what was in our arrangement when he had the lease on the septic field? Was there remediation? Nothing. So we have to pay for the remediation of the field?
But it's a much smaller scale than what we have.
Yes, I understand, but so I, I guess that would be our recommendation. I think it needs to be remediated. We don't want this to come back in the future as a problem if we, you know, 40 years down the road, somebody decides that's where they want to build the new grub shack and there's all this old concrete and stuff, piping. I think it needs to be remediated.
Sledgehammer and you take it out.
Which is dirt, they'll take it out. You know, that's an option, but then.
It's there. I agree.
And I deal with a tank that's over by the, um, porta potties right now, but there's an old septic tank and it's sticking up on the ground.
It's pushed up. Frost will continue to push it up.
It's still there and safe.
You, you want to crush the concrete walls and put them, just drop them in the hole? Is that what you want them to be?
But then it's just going to be there, as you said.
Well, I mean, it's true.
Well, we, my, my motion would be for the Leland County Board of Commissioners to, um, remediate and/or remove the septic field from Miles Kimberly Park, drain field from septic, from Miles Kimberly Park. That's my motion.
Are you talking about the chamber?
I'm going to leave it up to them. How much? If there's piping, let's leave it up to them. If they want to remove all the piping, um, however they want to remove and/or remediate this piece.
I'll second that. I think that's a good motion by saying either remediate or remove and let, let that committee say the pipe or look into it. I would, if it was me, I'd dig it out, but instead of putting it in a motion, I like, I like, I like her words that says remediate or remove paraphernalia or whatever it is. It'd be mine, too. You don't want that.
Chamber and all the piping in the field?
No, no. Field does not.
Okay, the field isn't the issue.
Just the tank.
It's going under the road.
The cement tank. Concrete tank, right.
So this is.
If they want to remove the pipes, fine.
That's fine. They want to.
So this, um, we're just going to throw it back to the commissioners and that's appropriate?
I do objectively pencil in an item on the November agenda that we could have this as well.
We'll go for some bids and probably.
So we have a motion to remove whatever needed to be removed at this point in time?
The motion is worded pretty good.
Uh, any other discussion on it?
This thing is only four to five foot across and a diameter, right? Six foot. You can smash that up pretty easy and dig it out of there and it's just time for piping might be a different issue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent.
To continue with the Miles Kimberly report, thank you, Laurel. Uh, we've, we've made a little progress. We, our committee of four met with Kevin Kovalleki from Gosling Skudek. And we went over, it was a first pass on the, on the master plan. And the plan is for him to revise that after he met with us. We talked about a lot of issues, a lot of things, and he's going to start working on the revision in November and have it by the end of November for us to further review. After we have that, we'll come back to the committee and tell you more about it. And then hopefully we're going to try to have some kind of a, you know, open forum for the public to come and comment and see what they think about what we think of on the master plan. Solon Township did something similar to this. There was a handout maybe most of you got, and I think something like that would be a good idea to have, uh, you know, a, um, a meeting, not necessarily here one year, maybe one somewhere else in the county, two other places where people can come and express their thoughts about the park. Have one especially in the Miles Kimberly area so people don't have to drive as far as they, well, they have to to maybe hear, hear what they have to say, so we can hear what they have to say. If you want more specifics, I can tell you more about what we did then. You want to hear about that? I think we have time. And so we focused initially on the, uh, on the north section, the northwest section. That's more pasture land over there, grass and whatnot. And we, there was a general consensus among the four of us. Karen was not here and she was most adamant about it to try to keep that as natural as possible. And we thought we could put a temporarily, we could use it as a, put the driving range over there because we have other plans for that area on the south side. But we could put the driving range over there temporarily until we come up with a permanent solution for that northwest area because it would still be grassland and we just mow the grassland, right? So that was one thought. And it doesn't mean that that's going to happen, but that was one thought. Uh, the four Hs over there, they don't do any horse, horse maneuvers over there, but we have archery over there, we have community garden, we have, uh, I H R was talked about a little and the composting display, things like that. Pretty much that'll all stay there, but we have a spot over there that we outlined that won't interfere with any of those things to put a dog park in over on the other side of the road. And that's, we're going to go in the, um, plan and that'll probably stay there. You'll see that when it comes out. As far as, we talked a lot about parking spaces and toilets and we think we should do all toilets, portable toilets. There's no toilets on the other side of the road, but there should be some portable toilets there, at least one handicapped and one, uh, regular one or maybe more than that. But that'll fit in the plan. And then the ice rink came up and hopefully the ice rink will, will come to fruition. We need water over. Now we need water over there, a source of water. How we're gonna get that truck in and the pipe put in, whatever. That's something to be determined. If you want it bad enough, and the county wants it bad enough, the commissioners should approve us the money to put a pipe over there to have some water to have a nice rink.
Um, and where did you consider the ice rink? Which side of the?
Oh, I'm sorry. The ice rink is gonna go on that horse, that pod, what is it called, Scott? Paddock? That's not.
Oh, the, the arena? The arena.
The arena, yeah, the open arena, right?
Yep, okay, yep, okay.
On the south section, we talked a lot about parking. We talked about pickleballs. Pickleball courts are coming. How many, how many we want is to be determined. Whether we want four, six or eight, but that's, that's gonna be worked on. We talked about it. I'm not sure what it came to, but we're gonna need a lot more parking. And parking spots all over the place were a big issue and that'll be coming out on that final report. Um, the paved loop trail, uh, we, we thought, John came up with a good idea to make a compromise on the paved loop trail. Maybe we'll get the money for it. Just do a half a mile universal access trail on the west side. And keep the east side of the loop trail, just make gravel out of that. And therefore we could focus, maybe get funding for the smaller loop trail, just a half a mile loop. And what that would do, we will put a crossover in on the one mile one anyway. And the other one will now be universal access, but that would be okay. Uh, we talked about the pit toilets were there and we thought the toilets should be removed and replaced with, uh, portable toilets. Again, some, all portable toilets. It would be nice to have functioning toilets, running water and everything, but that's not in the plans for money issues. And the portable toilets, I guess, cost effectively turn out to be a better deal than the whole thing and whatnot. Still expensive, you know, parking and park. And where we took the disc golf and put, not the disc golf, where we took the driving range, put it across the road, at least temporarily. And so we can have a disc, disc golf warm-up area on that east side. The east side of the south end is not utilized much at all. And that's one thing we could put over there. There's probably something else. Those are essentially, uh, pretty much what we summarized shortly, what we talked about. There might be other things. There is an electrical box in, in the toilets, the pit toilet area that'll have to be retained. So that building, part of that building will stay there and be an electrical, electrical, electrical box or an electrical house. Um, Steve, John, anything you want to add?
Uh, no, that was a good Reader's Digest condensed version of the meeting.
Yeah, Scott was saying that that pit toilet building could actually stay there. Um, fill in the, fill in the pit area. And then, of course, we need to keep that electrical portion there, but that would give us some storage. So that we could be functional to keep it as that because we have to keep part of it anyway.
Yeah, the building itself is solid. It's all cinder block.
Yeah, it's all cinder block.
So it'll be electrical.
It's the electrical closet.
One thing I didn't forget to talk about, you know, a lot of talk was about, it was the baseball fields. The baseball field should be upgraded. And if we put two fences, permanent fences at 200 feet, around two, those two that we're using, uh, softball can be played on those in different leagues and so. So that was a desired thing, to give that. And to buff up the ball fields, bleachers and scoreboards and whatnot. And maybe some, maybe some community funding for that can be obtained because there's a lot of interest in that, too. So that was talked about. Um, that was about it.
The disc golf warm-up actually would be like a, a par three or something. It's a very short, um, nine hole disc golf. Uh, I could play.
I do like that. I do like that a lot.
So it, uh, yeah, that, uh.
The real disc golfers, they like the trees. They want to be able to go around. It's a good, it's a good thing for the younger ones, too.
So that was, that was good. So making use of the park, that would be great.
Right, and that's an area we haven't made use of, um, to, to the degree we should. So if I meant to understand you right, the, this is a new revised loop. Um, is what is shown all asphalt? You spoke of some of it being gravel, so I.
No, no, this, this thing that you're looking at here in the handout.
Yes.
This is what we started with. And then we went around. We spent a lot of time here talking about it. And that's where we put a thing across here and made this, just a universal access loop. And this is gonna be the, all they.
Oh, I see. So there will be another.
This is not after our first discussion.
Okay, so this will be the half mile.
Exactly.
Okay, I was gonna say, because I thought it will be.
It's all a quarter mile.
Really? Because I thought this was all gonna be.
The whole is a mile and just that short.
Well, I look, I look at this and I cut it across.
It'll, it'll be clearer, I think, when.
I think it's clear.
When we get, when we get the plan and we, we talked about configuration a lot.
This is all a mile. Yep. But if we cut it here.
Cut it in half, it's a half a mile.
Right here.
Oh, no, I like your idea better. No, I like it. That would be.
Oh, yeah, he's right. We can't go up here because of the elevation.
Oh, I see. So this would be ADA, it would be paid for ADA. Down around the baseball diamond.
That's probably, that's not, then it's not a half mile. So half, it's quarter or more than a quarter, maybe.
But in the future, pave all this.
In the future, pave it, okay.
Exactly.
I do. Yeah, I'm still in it. Well, rollerbladers or bikers, okay. Okay, I'm, I'm with you for the ideas for the future.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's, there's some will be ADA and some won't. That's all there is to it.
Okay.
Do you think that's about a quarter mile, just?
I bet he's right because that's what he's saying.
Yeah, it's going across here.
Yeah, because it's across here.
And it comes down here, but eventually then we'll do all this.
Do all.
And shoot it up there and say, you have a crossover and that.
If you really want to go, I can measure.
Yeah, it's close enough. It is what it is, right?
Yeah, I'm assuming Gosling will have some numbers on it when they get that back to us.
So he's not getting, I guess they're busy and he's gonna start working on it, well, first week in November now. And we're not gonna see him again till the end of November. So I think you'll hear from me in December, hopefully.
Thank you.
From our committee.
Thank you. Any other comments on miles? Hearing none, seeing none, let's go to old settlers.
Okay, um, the first item I had was item one, which is the parking improvements proposal approval. Um, essentially, we've received two estimates, one from Stan's Dozer Service for $4,850 and the second one from an outfit called Two M Services for $2,525. So we're making a motion that we proceed with the, uh, the parking plans, the parking improvements using the Two, the Two M Services with their estimate not to exceed $2,525.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I support it.
We have a motion. We have support. Discussion. Does this need to go in front of the whole commission of the border commissioners? We can just move forward?
It's not a true agreement. They're just performing a service. It's under, um, the budget rule state $4,500.
Okay.
So, so we can move forward with it?
Perfect. Good.
And hopefully get it done before the big snow flies.
Indian summer is predicted. I heard it earlier today. Okay.
A question on that before we vote. So both of these people, you went and got quotes on them. Did they say they could do it within the next 90 days?
Stan's could not do it. Two M can do it.
Good. I just want to clarify that because it's not just a money thing. It's whether it can get done.
Yeah, we need to get back to them fast, but yes, they said they can do it.
All right.
Is there a date certain then or?
I'm sorry?
Is there a date certain on your motion then?
No, we don't have a date certain for the completion.
Like before winter or?
So if this motion passes right now, Scott could get right with them and during that would be good, okay?
Well, the motion is to go ahead with it. And they'll, they'll work with the contractor and try getting it done this year. Some of that can be done.
This year, maybe even during this Indian summer, right now.
Right. Within the next few weeks.
Yeah, Indian summer is coming.
Right. It is because you've said so.
We've had snow. Now we can have Indian summer. That's the rule. Rex Dobson said so.
Need to call the question?
Rex was never wrong.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
And the second is essentially a notification to this committee that we're proceeding, going forward with the gazebo refurbishments scope of service, um, item to be given to, I forgot, Laurel, is that for legal?
Yes.
They get it, okay, legal gets it next, um, to, for work to be done next year. And essentially do all the refurbishment of the gazebo, replace the roofing, um, replace the boards on the steps and the decking or refinish the boards on the decking and the stairs. Replace the upper and lower lattice, which is currently wood, with a vinyl lattice and vinyl side, the skirting around the gazebo. Essentially, those are the major items in the scope of service we're asking for.
And, and plastic lattice work up top if we can retain the scallop. Yep, if not, then wood, right, okay.
John?
Yeah?
One of the, uh, insurance inspection items was to paint it.
Was what? Painting?
Says here, paint the gazebo to stop the wood from deteriorating.
Yeah, well, we think we're gonna get it done fast enough into next year that it won't, that not necessary.
So this work that you're, is gonna be done next year?
Yes.
So this thing about painting doesn't apply because it's all gonna be taken care of next year?
Yes.
All right. Just.
And number N, and then actually the scope of service specifies that it should be done by between April 15th and Memorial Day or in between.
Late August.
Late August, yeah.
So this will have to go in front of the board?
Yes.
Once an RFP is.
Is that?
Once an RFP is conducted, the board doesn't have to prove going out for an RFP.
No, no, no. Is that, is that your motion to go out for an RFP? What's the motion or you didn't make one?
It's not a motion, it's a notification.
You don't have to approve going out for an RFP. You just have to approve accepting it. Or making a recommendation.
Perfect. Go ahead.
It is in the budget request for O two four. So no need for a motion on that?
Uh, just a couple of updated items. Um, we still, the, the Lanham Memorial Bench has been installed. We're still trying to investigate and get the bouncy bunny thing, um, to get it installed. Probably not this year now, probably next year that it'll happen. So that we move in there. Um, essentially, it's a donation from the Lanham family that we want to expedite as fast as we can. Um, the gazebo, the restoration of the electrical, the electrical service to the gazebo will probably happen next week. And that's all I've gotten. Unless anybody else has got some, some comments or questions about old settlers?
I think we're good. Hearing none, seeing none, on to Veronica Valley. John, you want to fill us in?
I'll take a stab at a couple of them. Uh, one, we wanted to move forward and get this pad poured. And we thought we had it approved last summer, but we didn't. Uh, it's gonna be inexpensive. I think Jerry plans on framing it up and working with Scott. They'd like to get it poured this year. So there's a motion on page 47 that, uh, we move forward with that pad. So Steve made a motion to bring it in front of the Parks and Rec. And all we need to do is vote to go ahead to pour this pad, which is way overdue. Hopefully, we can get it done this year and it's under, it's under what, we don't have to go in front of the board. I guess I'm bouncing around, but I'd like everybody to look at that motion on page 23 that, uh.
Maintenance will be tackling the issue, so it's not like we have to contract services.
And Scott, if you need help on framing that, I'll help you. Just give me a call. So that's my motion that the Parks and Rec approve moving forward this pad project at Veronica Valley at a cost not to exceed $3,000.
Is there support? Support. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The second motion is for Parks and Rec to approve the purchase of a safety ladder. And I think Scott's been going around looking at some and he has a couple in mind. But this was an insurance thing and I think it's a very good idea that if anybody goes around that edge and falls in, there's life jackets and you can stand up, but there's no way of getting out of there. And so I think that's a very good idea. Uh, again, this doesn't have to go in front of the board, but we're asking that Parks and Rec here today approve for Scott to go out and purchase. You don't have to use Scott's name, but we need to buy a ladder.
Essentially, this is somebody falls through the ice, you can shove the ladder down through it?
They're not walking on any ice. Has nothing to do with ice.
Nothing to do with that.
This has to do with amount of traffic around that little island.
There's a fish on the edge if they fall in on that right wall.
The ladder, I'm sorry, I missed, I couldn't hear. So is the ladder in there, like installed?
Yes, it'll be permanently installed.
Permanently installed, get, let's.
And it'll be bolted down to some of those heavy timbers there. I know when I walked around and inspected that whole thing, I couldn't get out. You know, it's only four feet deep, but you had to go all the way around to get out.
Yeah, okay.
You say it would be pulled out in winter?
I don't think so. No, that ice doesn't move around. That thing can stay there. It's not gonna get damaged.
Is that your motion, John? So there's a motion on the floor to approve the purchase of one safety ladder at a cost not to exceed $500? Is there support? Support. We have support. Comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And John, you wanted to say something about our parking lot drawings. That's on the agenda. It says here. Driveway configuration review. He's got a map included here, but we've been playing around with what our driveways may look like someday. It's not in the budget to do anything next year. Uh, we've been getting with Scott a couple of times a year for the last five years. So we're still looking at if we were gonna ever pave it, which is gonna be a lot of money. This is what it would look like.
No, I have.
That's on page 50.
The basic layout is the same we've had. And I talked with Steve last time as to the grading, basic grading plan.
Yep.
To maintain as a gravel. And he thought that the slopes that we had would still drain to retention area.
Yep.
It, does he really feel like that's necessary? Because it looks like we would lose a lot of parking spots.
Yeah, the, uh, John had asked about that, too. Um, that whole side and area where the retention is drawn will be overflow parking. We can use a berm along the edge near the plantings, just, um, bordering the wetlands. And that, uh, urgency overflow can be off the corner nearest to the county road. And so with the berm aspect, you don't have to make a, a really basin area. You can just berm along the outside and that holds the water back and then it'll infiltrate or drizzle over. So it's a, a technicality that would be. So it's a, a technicality that would be mandated by Solar Erosion Control slash Drain Commission, but we can fit that in and keep our parking.
And there is a place there, Melinda, for 20 parking places, if we did pave it and marked it out.
If there's, right now, how many, you know, cars can park there? Because they park on both sides right now.
Right.
Yeah, but.
It's, if that existing parking lot were paved, you could park 65 cars on that space, and Scott's been plowing that little area. And talking with Scott as to how many people might be cars, he says probably not more than about 15 for most of the time. So this shows 20 parking spaces with a barrier-free parking. You're required to have one parking space, one barrier-free parking space for 25 cars. So the feeling is that, from a maintenance standpoint, this is a savings. And, and you are gonna, you know, kids' fish day and that stuff, that's way beyond that.
Exception.
And it was.
The key car estimate is like the bats.
Oh, for most days, but what about when you have other events? Like the fish days, an anomaly?
We don't have a parking.
We don't. What about, how many other big events are there that where we run out of parking? Is that the, the education day?
Fish day is one. Fish day.
Fish day, other than?
Cross country.
Cross country events, okay.
There's a lot of overflow parking that's utilized during those events in several different areas.
Down to the west, okay. All right.
The, the layout also maintains a bus-sized school turning around in a counterclockwise manner, so.
I see that. How about, where mine went? That's also up where the porta potties are, right?
Correct, and when we pour these pads, Melinda, it's gonna kind of square it off on the end, and there'll be a lot more room there than this little sketch shows.
On the back of one of these is the.
Yeah, I saw that too. I was just thinking that if anybody wants to pull up and use the restroom there, are they going to park here, are they gonna really use one of the parking spots? You know, are they just gonna pull up?
It'll be available ADA from right there, and then it'll also be available ADA from the ADA parking.
Yeah.
So there'll be two spots that you could access the pad ADA-wise.
No, I didn't, you didn't mean just ADA, I'm talking about general.
Yeah, if I'm gonna use the porta jones, I'm not gonna park along the walk, I'm gonna.
That's what I was gonna get.
I'm gonna swing in and.
If you're a service driver.
Put my four-way flashers on.
Okay. All right.
All right, well, thanks, John. Any other comments or questions for John and John with regard to Veronica Valley and the parking area, anything else there? Hearing none, seeing none. We're on to public comment. Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner comments?
Item one, Steve Steereth in the last meeting on 10-4, he mentioned that the mission statement is outdated, it's 23 years old, and that we should as a committee look at the mission statement and revise it and upgrade it a little bit, and I think he's right about that. I just want that, didn't want that to get lost in the shuffle. Mentioned in the minutes, but I think I wanted to mention it again. So we do something about that, and it's just a good idea to puff that up and puff the parks up, and it's, chair of the board of commissioners, something to look at, say, oh, we're really doing all this too, oh, maybe we can do a little more money.
Next year, we'll be redoing a five-year plan.
That was gonna be my comment.
So.
We're probably already late getting started.
So, we'll get our chance to revisit that.
Yeah, that's true.
Want to think about any other commissioner comments? Chairperson, I'm good. I entertain a motion. Motion, adjourned. There's a motion.
Support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye. Just kidding.
Good job, Carol.
Scott, let me know, do you need help breathing, or just four?